House meeting on February ninth, two thousand and twenty one at seven thirty P. M. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, roll call, please.
Alder Roda Frada?
Yeah.
Alder Powder?
Here.
Alder Gerhardt?
Here.
Alder Crowsey?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Schroeder?
Here.
Alder, Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now, it's probably appearances and non agenda items. First up is a mayoral appointment to the Healthy Neighborhoods Grant Review Committee. We have Emily Born online with us and interested in serving on this committee. We are filling this one now because the applications are actually due and they're going to be starting work soon, so I didn't want to wait until April to fill this like we are for the other committees. Emily, would you please tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving?
Absolutely. Hi, everyone. I wish we were in person and I could shake your guys' hands and get to know you a little bit more, but Zoom is a wonderful substitute, right? So just to tell you a little bit about myself, I live in the Belmar Renaissance on the Park neighborhood. So I was born and grew up in and around the Pittsburgh area, moved away for school, lived in New York for about fourteen years, and then came back a little over a year ago and love being part of the community again. So while I was away, I studied economics because I thought it was a good way to understand a little bit more of the world. And I also studied Italian, and that was just purely for passion. When I studied economics, one of the things that we looked at specifically was how government could work with private enterprise and nonprofit organizations to accomplish infrastructure projects, as well as other different projects that would really improve the quality of life of citizens in a given area. And I love that idea of partnerships and many different stakeholders pulling together to accomplish something. I also have had a career in communications and media specifically and beyond, just, you know, encouraging people to buy more sportswear or to stop smoking. I also learned how to communicate across differences in experiences, in expertise, in opinion, as well as ultimate goals, and learn how to structure communications and conversation so that everyone feels like they have a seat at the table and are valued. And one of the ways that I really look to do that is through transparency, so people really know what's going on, which I find helps to build consensus and encourage people to move together towards a common goal. Another thing that I did that I think is directly applicable is reviewing requests for proposals. So we'd have a project, we'd ask vendors to submit what they propose, how they could accomplish this project. I would work with them to refine the proposal so it was even more on strategy. And then we'd set up a measurement plan for during the project as we were completing it, so we'd have check-in points, so we could tweak it and improve progress and performance as we went. And then at the end, we would have really clear metrics on how we were going to evaluate ourselves, to figure out what we did really well, how we knocked it out of the park, and how we could, you know, operationalize that and continue doing that. And then also, you know, where did we fall short a bit, and how could we set ourselves up for success moving forward? In terms of why I would love to serve on this committee, I, as I mentioned, I grew up in neighborhoods that are very similar to the one that I live in now. So neighborhoods that are wonderful and have a lot going for it, and also some struggles as well. And my family and myself were the direct beneficiaries of programs that were very similar to the ones that this committee reviewed. So it's very personal to me, and I had a natural affinity when I saw the opening. So I would absolutely love to work with you guys, learn with you guys, and really roll up my sleeves and get stuck in and help the people of Pittsburgh as much as possible. So, thank you.
All right.
I would love to move approval.
You don't want anyone to ask any questions? I can't, we're freezing up here on our end, so if someone has a question, I can't see if your hand's raised or yet, just quite yet.
It's Joe. So, thank you. That was a very comprehensive overview, and I think you'd be a great addition to the committee. I just also want to mention, I had this conversation with Mayor Richardson a little bit earlier, but I would love to see an additional person added because although you're great, there is a vacancy still for the area west of Verona Road. I think you live maybe three or four blocks away from me, and I noticed we did get an applicant. So the mayor and I just talked about, you know, potentially adding a fourth member that represents that neighborhood as well.
All right, any other questions? You're gonna have to just tell me, because I'm still got a bunch of black boxes on the screen right now. All right, doesn't look like.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Julia.
Yeah, so, thank you, Emily, for your interest. I am one of the members in the committee, the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, and I have been very involved with this committee from since the start. So it's great to see people like you, like really wants to, you know, come on board and work in the committee. And I want to ask you, what do you know about the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative that brought your attention? Like, you say, I want, really want to be in this community. You know, you mentioned SPAR, but what are the things that you have read about this program that it could be an impact in the area where you live?
Yeah, I think what I was really interested in is the programs that are really supporting families. So both like kids, I saw that there were a number of grants to programs like the Boys and Girls Club that they helped. So I reviewed those, and also programs that really help adults find employment and training opportunities. So I love that breadth of it.
All right, I can't, I can't. If someone else wants to ask a question, just let me know, because I can't see you right now.
We can always use the chat.
The chat.
Yeah, just say something in chat. Hopefully, I'll be able to see that. All right, I don't think anyone else does. So Dorothy, I hear you want to make a motion.
Yes, I would love to move approval.
All right.
Second.
Second.
Sent by Joe. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is approved. Thank you, Emily.
All right, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
All right.
Very much.
We have two people that want to speak on non agenda items. I've got one person here in chambers that I'm going to go with first, David Hates. And just a reminder that for the non agenda items, people have three minutes to speak. So go ahead, David, whenever you're ready.
All right. I'm David Haight. I live at five eight five five Woods Edge Road, property I've owned since two thousand and six. So I'm here regarding the Seminole Forest watershed and the city-owned stormwater management facility that's located within Seminole Glen Park. For the last ten years, the park has been the site of a series of extreme flood events. In the largest of these, the forested kettle natural area contained more storm water than the combined volume of all the detention ponds at Mackey Farms Park. In two thousand and eighteen, concerned neighborhood residents have implemented an engineering methodology designed to identify the causes of flooding. The analysis is based on combining topographic elevation data from flydine, like, LIDAR project and measured responses of the watershed to observe rainfall events. Starting in two thousand and eighteen, the resulting series of reports has been widely distributed to city staff and elected officials. In response, the council approved a two thousand and twenty SIP item to fund a prototype project to mitigate the frequency of small flood events. Work on that project is still pending. Mayors Gonzalez and Richardson each have directed city staff to develop a plan for a plant to mitigate permanently the flooding within the Seminole Forest watershed. Despite the urgency from elected officials, it appears that city staff has not allocated any resources to this task. Gaining consensus for the prioritization of city resources and substantial budget necessary to solve these stormwater management issues is going to require elected officials and staff to both be fully informed and engaged. The lengthy and convoluted timing of decisions made by the city over the past thirty years, which have affected the operation of the watershed, is a formidable barrier, formidable barrier to becoming fully informed. So I will be utilizing the three minutes before this council meetings going forward to provide the information that's a prerequisite for gaining that common baseline. As a bonus, it will come in easily digested three-minute bite-sized chunks. Here are three facts I will continue to emphasize at each presentation. One, as constructed, the Seminole Forest watershed is closed. There is no downstream outlet for pond overflows, no matter how large the rainfall event. Instead, all runoff must percolate through the soil, thereby infiltrating into the water table. Number two, flood events are not the result of increased frequency of large rainfall events or a high water table. While the magnitude of rainfall events affects flood volumes, flood events have and will continue to occur after sequences of historically typical rainfall events. And number three, the rigorous engineering measurement and analysis taken, undertaken of the watershed has identified the causes of the flooding to be a known set of completed city public works projects in combination with the complete neglect of statutory required watershed maintenance for the last twenty-plus years. And I look forward to seeing you at future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, and we also have Mary Lakuta on Zoom. Go ahead, Mary, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and allowing me to speak to the board this evening. I live in the village of Oregon, and I'm speaking tonight to let those residents living in the Oregon School District know that I recognize that Pittsburgh is a vital and growing part of the Oregon School District. There's a crowded field in my Oregon School Board race for Area One, Seat One, and here's why I believe I'm the best candidate and am actively asking for your vote in the primary. I'm a longtime member and taxpayer of the Oregon School District. My husband and I have lived in this community for twenty-four years. Our daughter Tori is a high school sophomore, and our son Ben is a recent graduate and current avid program instructor at the high school. We're also longtime, long-term members of Holy Mother of Consolation Church. I've also been an active participant in our schools for sixteen years. My current and past roles include in-class volunteer, PTO, stance fair and art fair organizers, volunteer teacher of Caesar's English, Career Day participant, and RCI Site Council member. And I've been involved in supporting numerous extracurricular activities as well. I clearly understand the roles and responsibilities of the school board and the many issues facing our district. I'm not a one-issue candidate, and I'm invested in the priorities of student-centered learning, supporting a high-quality teaching staff, equity and inclusion, managing the pandemic's impact on education and financial stewardship. School board members need to take into account all of the stakeholders and be visionary and strategic in the operation and oversight of the district. I'm a strong supporter of public education and know the important role our teachers play in student success. Today's students are tomorrow's community, and there's no more important role than we have than meeting their own unique learning and social emotional needs. Our success in doing so is directly related to the quality of our educators and staff and the support that's provided to them. I have the skills and the experience necessary to be an effective school board member. Throughout my professional career and community involvement, I have cultivated the ability to listen and learn. Can you all still hear me?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Collaborate, assess issues, and be a critical thinker, problem solve, and communicate effectively. I appreciate your time this evening, and I hope to get your vote at the primary on February sixteenth.
All right, thank you. All right, that is, I believe, all we have for non agenda items and appearances on non agenda items. All right, moving forward to consent agenda, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Someone?
Moved by Joe.
Second.
Sent it by Sarah, I believe. Is there anything that anyone?
Gabriella.
Oh, Gabriella, sorry.
Okay. Maybe we should say our names, since you can't see.
We can see for now, actually, so I just missed that one. Sorry, you were too fast. All right, if I, if it ends up I can't see it, again, I'll let you guys know, but for now, I can see, we're caught up. Is there anything on the consent agenda that someone would like to take out?
Yes, I would like to take out number seven.
All right. The R forty-six twenty-one?
Yes.
All right. Anything else? All right, then, seeing nothing else, all in favor of approving the consent agenda except for number seven, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, then that is approved. And then number seven, Julia?
Yeah, can we send that one to the, what is it, Aging Committee?
Committee on Aging Well?
Yes.
Sure, we can add that one.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion with that amended?
Yes, I would like to send to this resolution also to the Aging Well Committee. Aging, yeah.
Second, that, Dorothy?
All right, so Dorothy with the second. So all in favor of approving with the addition of also sending it to the Committee on Aging Well, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose nay? All right, that is also approved. All right, Administrator's Report, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, the Healthy Neighborhood Grant Application Deadline is Monday, February twenty-second. The City of Pittsburgh invites community members to participate in the Public Involvement Meeting for the Lacy Roadway Improvements Project. That's going to be tomorrow night, Wednesday, February seventeenth, from five-thirty P. M. to seven P. M. The project will consist of the following: reconstruct Lacy Road with curb and gutter from two hundred feet east of Fitchroona Road to Seminole Highway; install buffered bike lanes for both eastbound and westbound directions; and install a ten-foot multi-use path north of the roadway. So if you're interested in participating in that, you can either participate online, or the council chambers will also be open. That, again, is tomorrow night. Then the Fire Department, with all the snow we've had recently, would appreciate the public's health help with keeping the fire hydrant closest to your residence or business clear of snow. They need a three-foot clearance on all sides, and Fire Chief Joe wanted me to remind people that you can participate in and adopt a fire hydrant program by going to the city website, and I think a couple of the alders already were out there helping clear some and taking some pictures of that that were fun to see, so we appreciate that. And then I just wanted to, the Postal Contract Station and Sue's Gift Shop continues to be open through March eleventh. So we encourage you to continue to patronize the Postal Contract Station there at Hattree Hill, and we have a meeting scheduled with the USPS next week, Tuesday, to continue the conversation about the operation of that Postal Contract Station going forward for March eleventh. That's all I have to report.
All right, any questions? Yeah, Tom?
In reference to Lacy Road?
Yes.
That's in District Four, and due to the fact that this weather's not in our favor, is there going to be another meeting, or is this the only one? Or maybe we could have one later, maybe in the spring, or when's, is this the only meeting? I think it's a bad timing. You got a basketball game tomorrow night, you got bad weather, you got other things going on.
I think this is the start of the process, but I'm assuming there will be other public meetings going forward as the project, you know, continues to be engineered and designed. And just for the public's information, the project is currently in the design phase right now, and construction is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, Julia, I think you had a question as well?
Yeah, I have a question for Mike regarding the Postal Service Office, you know. So it's very important that we keep the Postal Service Office in the city. So, so what happened in the case, so can they transfer that permit to another business, or how does it work, Mike?
Right now, the contract is with Sue's Gift Shop and John Polisello there, so it's kind of his contract to continue, unless he would decide not to continue with that contract. If he would decide not to continue, then we would work with the USPS on an RFP process for a new operator going forward. So that's part of the discussion next week, Tuesday, with the USPS, but I've been in contact with the various parties, just kind of talking through that, and we're doing a Zoom meeting next week, Tuesday, that'll hopefully help clarify some questions and issues going forward, and then hopefully allow some decisions to be made.
Can I ask another crazy question?
Yep.
Have the city considered to bring the Postal Service to the city hall or to one of the, you know, our city buildings, you know, to be part of, I don't know?
Are you asking, Julio, about having a postal contract station in one of our city buildings?
Yeah, if we can get, you know, in case that we send a RFP and we don't have any proposals. I don't know, I am asking, maybe it's, can the city be one of the, you know, the participants?
I could ask that question next week. My understanding from earlier conversations is that it needs to be co-located with the retail operation there, and somebody that has that retail component that also then operates the Postal Contract Station. Because we did ask the question in the current situation here, could the current operator continue just with the contract station and not have a retail shop located with it, and the response was no from the US Postal Service. And many years ago, we had the conversation, as folks here remember, we started out asking for our own post office and a traditional post office, and we were told that the USPS business model was moving forward with contract stations co-located with retail operations versus new post office facilities. But I'll provide updates as we get closer to March eleventh at future council meetings to keep everybody up to date.
All right, seeing nothing else, so move on to Plan and Commission. Anything, Tom? We meet next week.
The only thing we have is February sixteenth, I believe, we're going to meet next week.
Yep. All right, Public Works, Sarah?
Sure. For the first one, I'd like to move approval as amended by staff for Resolution R one seventy-three twenty, accepting subdivision improvements in the Platte of Crescent, in the Platte of Crescent Crossing.
Second.
Signed by Joe. And did Public Works approve that amended?
We did.
All right, and what's this about?
This is for the Crescent Crossing subdivision off of Lacy Road. It was determined that the plant does meet what was expected. However, just after staff had reviewed it, they did want to add that F that was in the packet saying that the full acceptance of the public improvements for this phase of the plant is contingent upon the approval of Resolution R thirty-five twenty-one of the ATC agreement.
All right. Any questions on this one? All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one?
Like to move approval of Resolution R three twenty-one, authorizing Dane County Services for stormwater permit review and inspection in two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Sent it by, I think it was Gabriella. All right, got it right that time, good. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
And did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one about?
This is an annual resolution that requires review as it exceeds twenty-five thousand, but it's for the storm water.
All right, any questions on this? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one?
For this one, I'd like to move to postpone Resolution R nine twenty-one, Solid Waste Budget Amendment to allow spending of CDRR deposit funds.
Second.
Signed by Randy. And why are you postponing?
Public Works wanted to learn more on how the funds would be spent and wanted clarification, clarification especially on how we could guarantee that the Pittsburgh residents would be benefiting from the funds. And since RCC didn't meet until two eight, we were very curious to hear their feedback, and so we wanted to postpone until we were able to hear what RCC discussed.
Yeah, and I know that we're wanting to clarify the types of things that this money can be spent on, because there are some restrictions. We want to make sure we get that correct. Yeah, Gabriella?
It might be worth, well, I'm sorry, maybe worth while to have Claudia come to the next Public Works meeting when, if you want to discuss it further, because she has a lot of the context, in addition to watching the RCC meeting that we had last night. But there's also additional context. This is something that's come up several times in RCC in the past, you know, twelve months, so she'll be able to give that full context outside of just the last meeting.
Any other questions on postponing? All right, then, all in favor of postponing to the next meeting, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is postponed. All right, next one?
Move to approve R thirteen twenty-one, approving a memorandum of understanding with the Town of Dunn regarding the proposed USGS Swan Creek Monitor Station.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one, Sarah?
This is approving the Town of Dunn's involvement in the project that we discussed and approved within the two thousand and twenty-one budget to install the water monitoring station for Swan Creek in the Town of Dunn that will seek to monitor the effects of stormwater from Pittsburgh developments on the Wabisa Wetlands.
All right, any other questions, comments at all? Yeah, Gabriella?
I just wanted to thank the Town of Dunn for making a long-term commitment to this monitoring station, because for any residents that didn't have a chance to read it, not only are they contributing towards the installation cost, which is a one-time upfront cost of this year, they're also contributing yearly towards the monitoring costs, which is fantastic to have that type of long-term commitment. So thanks to the Town of Dunn, and really excited to see this project go up sometime in the, in the spring.
All right. It's always good to have those partnerships with our neighbors. All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that one's approved. Next up?
Move to approve Resolution R twenty-five twenty, approving a joint funding agreement with the US Geological Survey regarding the proposed USGS Swan Creek Monitoring Station.
Second.
All right, saying by Gabriella. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
All right, Sarah, what's this?
This is the water monitoring station that was once again discussed in the two thousand and twenty-one budget, and this is for that monitoring cost.
All right, any further questions, comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay? All right, that is approved. Next one?
Move to approve Resolution R seventeen twenty-one, approving change orders to a solid waste contract with Pelletary.
Second.
Sent by Randy. And let's see, did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
All right, and what's this one about, Sarah?
This is just due to the overwhelming amount of cardboard that the recycling area is receiving. We'd like to add two cardboard recycling dumpsters to the recycling drop-off site.
All right. Any questions, comments? Yeah, Dorothy?
One question that I had when I was watching the Public Works recording was whether we'd ever considered getting a compactor for cardboard. I know I've worked in places that use compacters to scrunch the cardboard smaller. I would think that the cost would be less overall if we didn't have as many dumpsters being emptied as often. So I'd like to at least throw that out for consideration in the department.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Sarah?
I, just to respond to it, I can, I'm not, I don't have a response on the compactor, I apologize, but I will throw out that we did have an extensive conversation on how busy the drop-off site is and that some staff did dedicate a weekend to monitor. and that some staff did dedicate a weekend to monitor the site. And it was, it was very interesting hearing Bill's report on how over the 40 residents, how many people were not able to produce a Pittsburgh ID. And just, it was a really interesting conversation. And so I do think that drop-off site is something that will come up again.
All right, Gabriella?
Yeah, also just to add a comment to that, I, we've been talking about this site quite a bit in, in RCC as well. And I think, you know, given the fact that the recycling fee has gone up year over year and the type of recycling we offer in the city of Pittsburgh, while it is pretty high-quality and extraordinary, it also has expenses to it. So we're trying to look at if we want to continue in perpetuity the level of service, you know, whether or not we can. So we're trying to ascertain if the, if enough people use the services to justify the cost. So in particular, the, the drop-off site, if we wanted to have as open as many hours and take as many items and then also unlimited curbside recycling. So that's gonna be an ongoing topic of discussion in RCC. I do think at some point we need to have that topic discussed for the council as a whole. I don't know if that's something that we, we committee the whole or have some sort of as a topic here. But I do think this is like a, just a good time to mention it, that we have been collecting some data and having those conversations. And we should have a bigger conversation in the near future about that.
All right, Tom?
Comment, reference to that to RCC. That's real important to the taxpayers. That's been out there for years and I've heard nothing but compliments that we have that drop-off place. And I certainly wouldn't like to see any reduce on hours or the way it's been handled. Prior to some Alders here, this has been talked about for years in the city. It goes way back in time, but it's real important to the taxpayers. And I think that's our number one goal out here is to help them out.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that one's approved, next one?
Move approval of resolution R 3521, resolution to accept American Transit Company agreement regarding public stormwater ponds on ATC land at Crescent Crossing. I think it's gone.
Signed by, I'll get that one, Joe. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
All right, what's this one about, Sarah?
This is the easement as part of that Crescent Crossing development that happens to fall on land that ATC owns. And it's just for the stormwater.
All right, questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, I have a question for Sarah. Do we need to, do we need to pay any rent or anything to have those pond there?
We had discussed this in Works, and I'm trying to look here, in that it was just listed as being part of the agreement as ATC. So we did not have it listed as encountering any additional costs.
I would think they would like the pond there because then trees don't grow underneath it that they have to cut down.
And it's the best use of those, you know, the land and, you know, below those cable, yes.
Yeah, Gabriella?
My understanding from RCC is that it actually is city property, but ATC has an easement on it so that they can,
Oh.
lines. And so we just need to make sure that we're on the same page with ATC, that we can continue to maintain it in the way that we really need to for that type of facility. But it is technically city property.
She's correct, yes, thank you.
And Randy, did you have a question?
No, that wasn't my question. I, I assumed it was city property with an easement, generally that's how it operates.
Great. All right, anything else? All right, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is approved, one more?
Move to approve resolution R 3921, approving a temporary emergency access road as part of a maintenance agreement for the Terra Vessa development.
Second.
Signed by Randy, and did Public Works approve this one?
Yes.
All right, what is it?
This is just that they really like a second, second access to that Forest Edge Elementary School that is part of the Terra Vessa development. Right now with the construction, it just has one access point. And from a best practices, they really would like that second point of entrance just in case they needed to use it.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, then that one's approved. All right, anything else, Sarah?
Nope.
That's enough? All right, how about Parks Commission?
For Parks, we met on February 4th. We had a good discussion about the North Fish Hatchery Hub. And I'm sure some amendments will come through council regarding the zoning setbacks and the classification of the hub. So excited for that to be discussed. Just to call out that Parks was excited to see that the warming house at McKee Farms has been really popular and that people have been getting outside, although I guess maybe not as much now that it's so frigid. But they also called out that they are planning a potential virtual youth dance program for March. So I'll be sure to share if I hear anything more about how that is planned. And we, the Sunny Side Park discussion got moved to the March meeting and was not discussed for February. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on then to the non-Sarah portion of the agenda. Library Board, Randy?
The Library Board has not met since the, our last council meeting, but we are meeting next Wednesday, 7/2, so nothing to report.
All right, what about Commission on Asian Well, Dorothy?
We will be meeting 8:30 Thursday morning. Topic is going to be case management update from social workers.
All right, what about RCC, Gabriella?
Yeah, RCC met last night. One note that there will for certain be a vacancy come April. And so if you're interested in the Research Conservation Commission, I do encourage you to apply. Like always, you can reply to a commission at any time, but now is especially a good time considering that there will be a vacancy. And feel free to reach out to me if, or any members on the commission if you want to find out more about how we operate. But also watching the meetings is a great way to get a sense of how the commission works. In terms of some things that are coming up this year, I'd ask you to save the date for Saturday, April 10th. We are gonna plan a spring waterway cleanup, which is an annual event that we had to cancel last year. But we're hoping, given the fact that we're, it's an outdoor event, that we're able to go forward with it. So if you're interested in participating, go ahead and mark your calendar on Saturday, April 10th for the spring waterway cleanup. For the 2021 calendar in RCC, we were looking at what we are gonna do with those two extra meetings that we approved in the budget. And in June, we are planning to have a meeting that's focusing exclusively on stormwater issues, hoping to have public comments as a part of that so we can have a more extensive conversation. So if you would like to, if you're interested in those types of issues, the June meeting will be a really interesting one to tune into. And then in October, we will have a meeting focusing on sustainability issues. And once again, we were hoping to get as much input from the public and for a really robust conversation about sustainability in the city of Pittsburgh. And we also just, or the, the department just released a new recycling guide. And if you have never seen the recycling guide before, it is incredibly useful. It can, it gives you resources on how to, how to recycle or reuse almost anything that you can think of in your household, not just kind of standard recyclable items. So I would encourage you, you can just Google Pittsburgh, Wisconsin Recycling Guide, it'll pop up. It's a PDF that you can download or print. And one important note that I think people might not realize, but 18 to 19% of items in a recycling cart actually ends up in the landfill because it was recycled improperly. That's, and that's a pretty extraordinary statistic, I think. And it often is, is not intentional, it's just a mistake because you don't really quite realize what you can and can't put in the recycling bin. So taking a quick look at it is, is I think worth your time, especially if you care about recycling and making sure that the things make it, make it into a reuse cycle. And then last thing, we're also, our sustainability specialist, Phil Grubie, is looking at some of the sustainability metrics for the city because we've set some pretty specific renewable energy goals for city energy use. And we will know more at the end of the year, but it actually is looking like we may achieve our 25% renewable goal by the end of this year. And we had originally aimed to hit that by 2025. So that's pretty extraordinary, although we are looking toward, towards 100% renewable energy for city energy use by 2030. So the fact that we're ahead of goal is actually really good because we set a pretty aggressive goal. So that's really exciting, we're hoping to have some more public-facing graphs to, to explain that to the public, which I'll share as soon as, at council as soon as we have them.
All right, thank you. What about Transportation and Transit?
So for Transportation and Transit, we are meeting this Thursday night at 6:30 PM. We'll be discussing the proposed alternate side parking ordinance changes. There'll be a, a meeting debrief for the MMM McCoy Road Intersection Project, the public meeting that was held, a debrief of that public meeting. And then we're also gonna be discussing the, the upcoming meetings regarding public transit changes. We are hoping to have two public meetings, one on Thursday, March 11th, starting at 6:30 PM, and another one on Wednesday, March 17th at 10:00 AM. We're gonna be discussing that schedule in more depth, but if you're interested in contributing, really hope that you might be able to make it on March 11th or March 17th. And we'll be discussing that more tomorrow. Thanks.
All right, next up is Seda, Julia?
We met two weeks ago, we discussed several topics. One, it was economy development and Public Works are working to issue the RFQ for the wayfinding project. This is all the, you know, the branding of the city. So you can see sometimes they are old logos and new logos. So the project has been delayed due, due to the many road construction project. But then, so the fabrication of the new one is gonna take place in 2021 and the installation is gonna be between 21 and 23. We also discussed the forward business, forward Pittsburgh Business Boost Loan Program. So we have an update to that. And then we discussed the hotel room tax for quarter four. So collection, they were due on January 31st. About the preliminary report showed that 2020 will come significantly low compared to the quarter of 2019. It's due to the pandemic, pandemic. Then we have a presentation for, from White Thompson with an update on the hub and the recommended change it to the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Grant Program. And then Mike, our Economy Development Director, provide an update on the project that the Economic Department has been working, which include working with several senior housing developers, WDC, to see the city qualify for a CDI grant. Also, H and A Advisory submitted an engagement agreement to start working on the affordable endowment ownership pilot project. You remember that we had that in committee, the whole meeting in the summer about this project? And then the other thing that we discussed is, you know, there was a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago organized by Payne and Dolan for a new neighborhood plan on Lacy and Fitcherona. So, and then that's it.
All right, thank you. And next up is Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Uh, nothing to report, but we do meet next Wed, excuse me, next Tuesday, the 16th.
All right, EMS, Shannon?
Um, we, we meet on Thursday, this, next Thursday. Nothing to report otherwise.
All right, Bicycle Committee, Joe?
Sure, we met on February 2nd. We had a lot of discussion items, but nothing that led to any particular motions or movement. But just to note that our March Committee of the whole meeting will feature a presentation from the Bike Committee, so just stay tuned for that.
All right, great, Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet again in March.
All right, Landmarks Preservation?
We haven't met, so nothing further on that.
All right, well, what about Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
We've got a meeting scheduled on March 8th.
All right, what about Healthy Neighborhoods?
And they are scheduled for March 10th.
All right, then moving on to Finance Committee, Julia?
Okay, okay, in Finance Committee meeting, we, we approve some of the bills. The third batch was the detailed review of all of check issued, check number 121622-121776, dated January 16th to January 31st, totally 1,748,733 dollars with 5 cents. We also review the detailed review of all ACH payment from January 1st to January 31st with a total of 114,393 with 65 dollars, 65 cents on it. And then I need to move, I need to move approval of resolution R 3821, amending the 2021 general fund budget for the accessory construction services.
Second.
All right, signed by Randy, and what's this one about?
Is Misty here? Misty can explain.
Yeah, Misty, go ahead.
Sure, so we have a vacancy currently in the commercial assessor position. But this is a really, really busy time for the assessing department. So this budget amendment that's in front of you is to move the vacancy savings from about a month and a half that we know this position will be open and move that to professional services so that we can hire a contracted person to come in and help them during this vacancy time. There might be a little bit of an overlap and we don't know for sure how long the position will be vacant. But we know that this budget amendment will be the minimum amount of vacancy savings available to transfer.
I know they're doing interviews tomorrow for that open position, but just for some perspective, I know Amy, our manager in that area, has been putting in a lot of hours for a long time. And I know last weekend was one of the first weekends in a long time that she didn't work. So she's putting a lot of extra hours at night and on the weekends. So anything we can do to help that area, I think is great. And I might, we might be bringing more forward just to help that area because there's a lot going on. Other questions at all for this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose nay. All right, that is approved, anything else, Julia?
No, they're coming, another one coming later and most of the other one we are, we approve under Public Works, so.
All right, Personnel, Dorothy?
We had a meeting on the 2nd and it was a busy agenda. One of the things that we talked about was the city administrator survey that we sent out. We got 132 responses to that. The top three business characteristics desired in a new city administrator is local government experience, budgeting and financial experience, and strives to ensure diverse stakeholders are heard and included in decisions. Personnel char, characteristics, integrity, respectful values, others' opinions. There were a number of comments included. They really stress need for integrity and thorough background checks. Looking for someone that has proven results, demonstrated experience in diversity and inclusion were strong trends in the comments. We talked about the tentative timeline for the recruitment process. Erin, do you know if the job has been posted yet or when it will be supposed to be this week?
Is gonna be this week, hopefully tomorrow, but it might be Thursday.
Okay. And then the basic is the week of March 22nd or so, there'll be some initial phone and Zoom interviews with candidates. Oh, it'll be open through March, through March 15th. And then April 27th, we'll, we'll have a council meeting in closed session to visit with the mayor's choice. There, there will be a lot of meetings and tours and whatnot in between. There there will be a lot of meetings and tours and whatnot in between. So there and with a lot of uh people involved. Um, we also talked about um. A lot of. The e- equitable hiring tool, which I asked Joe if he could talk about, they had a meeting on. Thursday and I'm going to let him continue on. Uh, talking about what they talked about with job description and the contract. As part of that meeting as well, if that's okay with you Joe.
Yeah, I can do that. Um, so. Um, the mayor asked for myself along with um. Uh, uh, Pittsburgh citizen and um two staff members um to join um Sarah Olson. To discuss um an equitable hiring tool, so. Uh, it was adapted from the City of Madison, um, they have a, you know, an official civil rights. Um, division and um a part of that includes um a tool that. Essentially, it's a questionnaire or a screener that when you're going through a process. For hiring, for recruiting, for um, you know, accepting grants to be able to ask. Um, questions about the process in a way that um. Ensures that. All voices are being heard and that you're not, you know, screening out people or or um putting barriers in the way. Um, that would prevent, you know, certain candidates from being eligible or or being able to be considered. So we looked through that tool. Um, took about an hour and a half, it was a really good process. Um, I don't have. The notes right in front of me of how it went, but um, I think it was really good in considering things like the. Um, what what characteristics are required versus what should be optional. Um, how do we go about, you know, seeking um diverse candidates? Um, what kind of educational or career um requirements will have? And then what characteristics do we want to see that we may have not otherwise included on a search like this? Um, so that information was um shared with uh Sarah. And um, she's going to take that into consideration as um that position description is crafted. It it sounds like it's sort of in the process of being uh finalized pretty soon, so any questions?
Yeah, I know, I saw some of the changes that you guys suggested, and there are a lot of great changes on there, I thought, so thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Anything else Dorothy?
Question, can the council uh members see those changes?
Uh, yeah, I think that uh Sarah just sent it to the Personnel Committee earlier tonight, and so we can forward that to everyone. Sure.
Yeah, did the was the job description that was in there the final description?
I I think it was with, I don't, I don't remember, I just glanced at it real quick because I was preparing for the meeting.
Well, if it's supposed to be posted tomorrow, I would think that it would be really close if not.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, anything else? Alright, seeing none. Uh, Public Safety Sarah?
Today, we approved an extension of the Pittsburgh pharmacies. Area that they had blocked off on uh Cahill before just for COVID testing. And they're actually extending that because they are uh also administering vaccines now. And I saw them on the news tonight as to how busy they've been administering vaccines, but that was the only business we had for tonight.
Alright, and move along to Mayor's Reports. Uh, like I mentioned, the city administrator position is going to be posted this week. And as we go through the process, this, we talked about the steps of personnel. That we will have council members involved throughout and there is a s- a spot uh towards the end of the process where. You know, kind of every, all council members members will for sure have an opportunity to, I believe, meet with the finalists. I I don't know if we'll have two or three finalists, what that'll be, but there will be opportunities there and also opportunities for the public as well to. Be involved and to at least especially see the finalists and get some exposure to those finalists as well. Uh, Gabriella mentioned the opening on R C C, there's also going to be openings on Transportation and Transit, Police and Fire Commission. Um, I there, I think there's more, I can't think off the top of my head, redistricting obviously is out there as well. I know we've had a lot of people apply so far, but still, you know, encourage people to apply for that because in April we'll be filling all those, so anyone from the public. If there is something that you're interested in, please go out and apply for that. Uh, another thing that is going to be coming up in soon and I'll see that we'll talk about this is that. I asked staff to kind of bring back the expanded outdoor seating option for restaurants that we did last year during the pandemic. Uh, you know, pandemic is still here and those businesses are still suffering. And so I would like to bring that back again this year, and so they're working on that, and so look for that to come up soon here. And also the, we had a new order this year, obviously, from Public Health. Right now, that goes until March tenth and we're kind of curious to see what comes out in March tenth. Right now, tentatively, we're thinking about possibly opening a hall, City Hall on April first. Depends a little bit on that March tenth order and where we continue to go as a community over the next month. Hopefully, it continues to be good and the numbers continue to go up and people get vaccinated. Very tentative, but possibly April first is when we would open City Hall again to the public. Uh, communal hall in February, uh, we are going to bring Civmic in to do some harassment and bullying training. Based on some feedback I've gotten from a number of people. And that's something that uh we're going to start doing annually for the council. As I continue to want to do a better job of onboarding new council members at the beginning of the year, I think that's one piece of that. There's a few other pieces that I think I want to do as well, uh, because I think we do a better job. Of getting new members on board and kind of getting them up to speed. And we're going to have to do that every year now because there's an election every year, so uh continuing looking to improve that. And then uh just last thing is next Tuesday, there is a primary, so be sure to go and vote in that. Alright, now that's everything, I think, are we on District Three to start with this week, this month, or this meeting maybe? Uh, Sarah, do you have a report?
Oh, report for me.
Alright, Shannon.
No report for me.
Alright, how about District Two, uh Gabriella?
Yes, a couple of things, um, I want to reiterate what um Mike Zimmerman said earlier about adaptive fire hydrant. Uh, I've been digging up the one near my house regularly, this is the most storm of snow I think we've had in at least the last five years, so. They are definitely buried right now, um, all the fire hydrants have a little. Uh, you know, orange thing that pops up so you can see where they are, but it's definitely worthwhile to. Dig them out, uh, if for nothing else than to uh protect your home and your neighbors' homes. So, you know, it, once it gets, maybe, maybe wait till it gets a little bit warmer outside, but um, go out there, it's good exercise and uh it's kind of fun to. To keep that, keep that going. And then one small note about winter road maintenance in Pittsburgh that I just recently learned. Um, there is actually a technique where you pre-wet the salt that goes down the road with brine. Um, and when you do that, it actually allows us to use less salt, um, and the salt is more effective more quickly. Uh, i- it's called salt browning and interestingly, we actually use a a special combination that's eighty percent salt water and twenty percent beet juice. Um, and the reason why we, we have, it has to be a very specific combination, because if you have too much liquid content. Um, that's not salty, you can actually like create ice on the road, so it's a very, very specific formula. Uh, but it's this great uh policy the city has had in place for a while, it saves us about twenty percent. Uh, it reduces our salt usage of rocks, salt usage just throughout the winter by about twenty percent. Um, which is very significant and it's good for the budget, it's also really good for the environment because that salt eventually makes it way into. Our waterways and our lakes, um, and which causes problems in the um. In 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 the, in the system of the lake, so that that was an interesting note that you might be uh think was as fun as I thought it was. Thanks.
Alright, Julia.
Um, oh, I am unmuted, okay. Uh, so I want to mention that, you know, in District Two, we have plenty of restaurants and. You know, Valentine Day is coming, so try to um shop in Fitchville, uh, support our local restaurants. Um, there are a couple of restaurant, especially one that has already the Valentine menu, um. Can I name this restaurant? I don't know.
Sure.
Say it.
Sure.
Uh?
Sure.
Liliana Restaurant has a very nice, um, you know, menu already for. Valentine Day and Mardi Gras, um, king cakes, you like king cakes, I love it, I used to live in the south. Um, so you need to preorder. Um, and also want to um, to congratulate another business in District Two is the Fitchville Family. Pharmacy because they are doing a great job with the va- vaccination and COVID testing, so thank you um. For um, they go beyond, you know, what they they are doing, so to provide services to the community, so I want to say thank you to them.
Alright, uh, District One Dorothy.
Yeah, I wanted to, oh, on on Gabriella's um. Brining, when when you see stripes going down the roads, that's that. So, but before a predicted snowfall, when you see those stripes, they're out brining the road, getting it ready. Um, I wanted to acknowledge particularly Jack from the um. Our city inspection department, he he's really been doing yeoman's work, um. Going around and making sure that things are as tidy as they can be. I know there's a lot of places that have more problems than others, but he's he's still been. Um, doing the best he can to in trying times and difficult circumstances. Um, I also wanted to note, speaking of restaurants and Liliana's, um. And I would like Tracy to absolutely confirm, um, both the. February sixteenth and the April election for District One will be at Little John's again, correct?
Anna's correct.
Okay, cool. And oth- other than the future of Little John's coming, District One still has no restaurants. Unlike District Two.
Alright, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, um, just a reminder on Fridays, uh, in front of um Liquor Town. Three to eight, um, you can at least eat um from J D's. Um, I also wanted to mention that today was the first day that um the Verona School District had um in person. So I just want to encourage anybody that has um, you know, children in the school district to. Ensure that uh your young people are taking precautions and that they're following the social distancing guidelines. And if you want to sort of learn more about the process, you can go to the um. Bron Area School District website and um just kind of look at what procedures they have in place. That's all I've got.
Alright, uh, District Four Randy.
Okay, uh, let's see, since we met last, um, there's been two public information meetings, uh, they are both. Were held the same evening, uh, Thursday, January twenty eighth. Um, the first meeting was with the uh county Trump Highway M M and McCoy Signalization. Uh, we did receive Wisconsin D O T money for that project and we are partnered with the Dane County. Uh, there were three items of discussion, the signalization itself, uh, the reallocation. Of uh, from the four lanes to the two lanes and two lane turn lanes on County Trump M M. And then, of course, uh, the relocating of the Capital City path, bike path crossing County Trump M M. And relocated it to the signalized uh intersection. Uh, there was good discussion, um, former Mayor Arnold. Uh, had a number of good points and uh. Uh, Mayor Richardson was also on the call and he had a number of good points. The um, the other meeting was uh regarding the Payne and Dolan subdivision, for those that are not aware of it. Is uh a new subdivision, uh southeast corner of Lacy and uh Petrona. And there were a number of uh things discussed, stormwater being a big issue. And uh green space, uh tree line, curbs, uh gutter on Lacy, so forth, and of course sidewalks. And uh different phases of the timeline, the specific timeline, so. Uh, and again, just to reiterate what Mike Zimmerman mentioned earlier, there is the information meeting tomorrow evening for regarding Lacy Road, so. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Alright, Tom.
Actually, I just have a question for. Um, you mayor. On one of the agendas, you know, it doesn't have to be every every agenda, but maybe one of the agendas, could we have an update from Town of Madison? Or what's going on there, so people are aware what's going on?
Sure.
Uh, just one time, you don't have to do.
Yep, I can do it. And I'll continue to update the Council Two on any updates with the city administrator position too. Alright.
And with regards to the Town of Madison, uh, Alder Clodder, I would just mention that we're having a special topics department head meeting. On uh Tuesday, I think it's March second or third, whichever Tuesday that is. Uh, to uh hear from all the departments as we continue to do kind of planning and preparation. Uh, going forward, and then we have our quarterly meeting with our Madison colleagues in April. There, so we'll keep you updated and.
Can I ask you a question on that, Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Um, in reference to meeting with the town, um, has it been? How has that been going? Has that been going, has it been cordial? Has it been knowing that these individuals may be losing jobs, I could see where that can be. A little tough, a little tough to sit through, but uh how's that been going?
We haven't had meetings with them other than with Renee, we've gotten some of the financial documents that we were looking for that we didn't have necessarily when we updated. The council at the committee of the whole meeting there, but we're going to be in communication with them going forward uh here with uh Renee.
Right now, you don't know.
No, no. Well, we'll provide further updates at future council meetings.
Was there something else, Mike, you wanted to?
Yeah, I s- I steered people wrong on, and sorry Randy. Uh, the public information meeting for the uh Lacy Road Reconstruction is actually next Wednesday. Uh, February seventeenth, I'm a week ahead of myself there, so hopefully it's warmer by then and there's not a basketball game. Uh, next week that competes with it, so it's next Wednesday, February seventeenth, uh, five thirty to seven P M, so sorry for any confusion on that. And then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, uh, Jim Hegenbarth, President and C E O. Of the Park Bank, uh headquartered here in Pittsburgh with multiple branches. Uh, he was recognized and honored as the twenty twenty Wisconsin Bankers Association uh Banker of the Year. And to be named Community Banker of the Year means showing an unparalleled commitment to your bank, your community and the industry as a whole. And in my twenty-five years here in in Pittsburgh, I can definitely say that Jim exemplifies all those qualities and attributes there, so. Congratulations to to Jim, a well-deserved honor and recognition for him.
Alright, thank you. Uh, no unfinished business, uh, new business?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah, one of the thing that um I was very concerned to read on the news on the Fitchville Star was. Uh, the article about the Town of Madison. And I and I agree with Tom that we need to bring this topic to the table as often as we can to have an update, because I think there was. It was very alarming when they said the Fitchville need to hire fifteen new position like next year, and it wasn't. What we discussed in the meeting, so I don't know if we can share that information that we got from the staff to them. Uh, because I have a couple of residents uh that they asked me. While the city is going to hire fifteen new position next year, you know, and they were all alarmed by, you know, the budget and. How is going to repercue to the budget, how we're going to get the money and. They never, they never mentioned the part of the tax, the Town of Madison is also going to provide some revenue because the people that they live in the town. The business that they are in the town, they pay taxes, so I think that was, that article was very concerning for alarming. Um, for the, you know, um, because the information wasn't clear and I think it wasn't what we discussed, you know, so.
Yeah, I had reached out.
You mayor have a, you had to clarify some topic too?
Yeah, I reached out to clarify that there, that there's no way that we'd be able to get fifteen positions in next year's budget. I'm I'm hoping over three years, but even that might be optimistic. Yeah, so I know that on the online article, she had made some updates to that article, to that as well, so I know that's out there, thank you, I know you're watching Kimberly. Alright, uh, going on to Director Furles, uh, Julia, are you doing both of these?
Yeah, I can do, uh, I need a motion to um approve uh approve resolution R dash forty-two dash ninety-one. Is accepting the twenty twenty donations.
Second.
Saying goodbye Gabriella, and what's this, Julia?
So every year the city have to, we we had to pass. So every year, the city have to, we had to pass an ordinary, a formal resolution to approve all the, you know, the donation that we, the city received during the years from, you know, you can see the list on the, on the package from people giving away cookies or baskets or food, or, you know, some, or gift card, so we need to accept those as donation.
Any questions here, Randy?
This question is probably more for Misty, but under fire is EBI. The dollar amount, twenty-seven thousand of floor samples, can clarify that, what does that mean? Twenty-seven thousand is a significant amount, but what does it mean by floor sample?
So, if I may, Aaron?
Yeah, please.
The EBI showroom closed down or remodeled or did something there. And they had a lot of furniture samples that were out for kind of display purposes that they didn't need anymore. So they donated those to the city. It's like one of our conference rooms has this nice new conference room table in it that we got from them.
EBI is a local furniture store here in Madison.
Right, just the clarification. Thank you, Misty.
Any other questions on this one? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. All right, one more, Julia?
Yeah, the next one is I move approval of resolution R dash forty-seven dash twenty-one adopting the amendment emergency sick and leave and family leave policy for general employees and emergency responders.
Seconded by, I'll give it to Randy, I guess, that time. Okay, and did finance approve?
Yeah, we approve it. Misty is going to tell us what it is.
All right, go ahead, Misty.
Sure, so a couple of meetings back, the two emergency paid sick leave policies were both extended to this Friday. At the time, we purposely headed a bit of a shorter extension because we weren't sure what was going to happen at the federal level. So we always knew we would be bringing this back for your discussion at this meeting. At this point, what's in front of you is to continue that extension through the end of March. Or there's new language in there now, if we do get different requirements from the federal or the state government that this policy would be terminated and then we would instead provide what's required to be provided by the feds or the state. At this point, we know that there's a lot of conversations happening about requiring emergency paid sick leave to employees, but there's nothing that's been decided on or been told to us at this point. So we'd like to extend our policies from before through the first quarter.
And my guess is that if the federal government still hasn't done anything by that point, we'd probably look to extend it again unless COVID's over by March thirty-first, but obviously that's not going to happen.
So the, the March thirty-first date comes from the original Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It allowed companies that were previously required to provide that leave. It allowed them to continue providing it and get the tax credit for everybody except us through March thirty-first. So that's the reason for that date at this point.
Questions on this? All right, Dorothy?
I think I'm going to ask if it would be reasonable to amend it to say that it's okay to re-extend it another month if that becomes appropriate so we don't have to rewrite a whole new one.
Misty, do you want to answer?
Yeah, so I know Valerie worked with our labor attorney to get even that, that new language in there. So I'd hate to amend it too much more than that because it has already gone through the attorney. I just, I'd hate to bind ourselves to something that might be different than what we expect.
I know it gets a little tricky with some of this stuff here and anything else? All right, then, all in favor of approving, say aye. And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. Next council meeting is in two weeks. Next community hall is in two weeks and one day. Julia, do you want to give us a glimpse into the topics?
Yeah, so, so we're going to have two presentation and one training. The mayor already mentioned the training that we're going to have. And then two presentation, one from Phil Groupie. He will talk about the WPSC Office of Energy Innovation Grant that the city is working. And then the other presentation is going to be from Stormwater. The study from Sub Zero Stormwater Study that we are going to have our consultant from Strand that they are going to come to do the presentation with Claudia. So this is a two very important topics, the Stormwater Study that we are waiting for a long time. And then the other one, the Energy Innovation Grants, so. So be prepared, it's going to be around one hour each presentation plus the training, I think it's half an hour. I don't, I don't know, but so it's two hour and a half, so you, you know.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Led by Joe and seconded by Randy, I guess. All in favor of adjourned, say aye. And opposed nay? All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night and stay warm.